We'll just skip that part. Minutes of the meeting of May eighteenth, are there any errors or omissions? If not, we're going to pay a motion to approve them.
Make a motion to approve the minutes?
Second half.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, bills.
No additions or deletions.
Huh?
There's no additions or deletions.
Okay, um, any comment on the bills from the board?
Make a motion to reiterate the bills.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll see you, clerk, to read your correspondence.
All right, we've got some correspondence. Everyone, please stay six feet away from me because I can't read with this on, I'll suffocate. Uh, we have a letter from Jason Bory at NCCS Cougar. I hope this email finds you well. I don't know if you remember me, but we met around the holidays when we brought a bus full of students over for skating during the afternoon. I have a question regarding the community stage. Is the stage open for use during this time of COVID-19? I have a scheduled theater camp through the Town of Champlain Summer Recreation Program beginning the first week of June. That could change. The camp was slated to take place at the school, but due to the coronavirus, school is no longer available. In alignment with the CDC guidelines and Clinton County Health Department regulations, the camp could take place at an alternate location being outside in the open where social distancing could take place. If cleared by the Clinton County Health Department and the Town of Champlain, can the stage be used for the duration of the camp, weather permitting? The camp is scheduled to take place five days a week, Monday through Friday, for three weeks from three forty-five to five P.M., beginning in June. Due to gathering limitations, only nine students and one instructor wearing masks would be involved on any day. Along with myself, Charlene Sampel is a coordinator for this event. You can reach me at this email. Thank you for your time and the quote here from you.
Hey, what's the board think of this?
I don't, I mean, as long as they stay social distance, I don't see why.
Not any problem.
They all got masks on, so.
As long as they all got masks.
Is this a school?
It's a school function.
School function?
It is, I think it is a school function.
Well, I, I was.
Through the Town of Champlain Recreation Program.
Yeah, it's like, it's like our summer program.
Otherwise, otherwise, the school has to approve this thing.
Has nothing to do with school.
No, I don't think.
Oh? Okay, I would say then, um, sort of the summer programs, yeah, I would, yes?
Um, we might, we're right now, we can only have ten people in a gathering. We might soon be able to go to twenty-five people in a gathering by the time they get, they're gonna have to get Clinton County Health Department and Town of Champlain okay. Um, the only thing I would mention is that we've got some summer program here. We have a, a tumbling and acrobatics class that wants to take place on the lawn, and that's not until July or August. So they're waiting on, um, canceling that because I think by then they'll be able to have a bigger group and do that.
Yeah.
They might want to use the stage for their awards at the end of the tumbling program.
He said he's gonna be in June.
So, um.
Well, the only, the question I have though is if they're doing this so late in the day from three forty-five to five, who's gonna be out there to unlock it and open it and stuff? Because we don't have any village employees working then.
I mean, Jason's a, he's a councilman, and I think we could probably give him a key or something. He's a councilman in Champlain. He's on the board up there, so. They'll lock it up anyway. We, we've got people here till three thirty, right? They can unlock it for him.
Four o'clock.
Well, I don't personally, I personally don't have a problem with this. How's the board feel?
Well, I'm sure they probably want to use the restrooms and stuff like that, too.
They're only gonna be here an hour and fifteen minutes, so.
I mean, as long as he gets approval from the Clinton County Health Department, I mean, I don't see why.
Yeah, the back restrooms will be open anyway. You have the ones outside. Oh, those will be open. We don't have to have the building open in the front.
Yeah, I don't see why.
So, as long as, as long as he can get approval from the Clinton County Health Department and Champlain.
Okay, let's have a motion to, uh, approve this with the proviso that he has the, provision from Clinton County Health and the Town of Champlain to run this thing, and then coordinate with Ethan, uh, as far as getting a key to go in there. Our guys can unlock it for him, get him started, and they'll have to lock it up and turn the lights off when they're done. Okay, that's my, I'll make that as a motion. Somebody want to second that?
Yep, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Okay, next set of communications are from the library board. The first one is from Jim Giro. All concerned, on nineteen July two thousand and five, I attended my first meeting as a trustee. Now I have attended my last. I resign. I shall pursue no more matters for the board and shall turn over papers to the liaison. Jim L. Giro. The second one is from Donna Racine. Dear fellow board members, after a long and eventful tenure, it is time for me to resign from the Dodge Memorial Board of Trustees as of May thirty-first. The third is from Everett Larson. Hello, this is to inform the village board of my intention to resign from the Dodge Memorial Library Trustees effective Monday, June one, two thousand and twenty for personal reasons. I appreciate the opportunity. I had to serve on the library and the village. And that is it for correspondence.
Okay. Um, that requires no action by the, by the board. The library board will make some recommendations, uh, for replacement members, uh, when they get a chance, and then we'll approve or not approve whoever they put forth, the things they put forth. How many members left?
Two.
Thank you. Okay, the first one I have is a, uh, resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-two. This is the one we hate to do every year. Whereas certain electric customers' accounts are deemed not collectible by the village, and whereas it is advisable to write these accounts off our books, therefore be resolved that the attached list of accounts be written off effective May thirty-first, two thousand and twenty. Okay, so I'll move that, uh, I'll move that as a motion. Give me a second. Okay, uh, we need roll call on that, or?
Yes.
Uh, trustee Arnold?
Aye.
Trustee Dart?
Aye.
Trustee Menard?
Aye.
The mayor votes aye. Okay, then we have Fourth of July Committee. We have, um, Karen Weirstall's here tonight, the, um, one of the co-chairmen of the, the Fourth of July Committee. Would you like to tell us anything or your recommendations, some of your ideas?
Yeah.
We know you've put a lot of time in this, you and Bridget, and we certainly appreciate your efforts, and it's just unfortunate that this unprecedented thing happened, the pandemic that we're not allowed to have the Fourth of July, but.
Unfortunately, a lot of, a lot of good people put a lot of work into it, but it's the time that we're in. Um, so we have, um, some ide, well, in total, obviously, we'll have to cancel it in the capacity that it was and how we had it. Um, we were just discussing that, the best way to do it, I guess. I'll be in touch with you to put a correspondence out for that. Um, we had some ideas to still have some celebration, um, in the world that we're in. Um, the first idea would be spearheaded by Jason Bory, who was the correspondent there and, um, one of the members in the Town of Champlain. And he recently did one of the vehicle parades for Memorial Day. So he has been in contact with the people, proper people that he needs to in order to get the permissions and to make sure that we're following all the regulations and guidelines. Um, it's basically a thank you to essential workers, um, emergency responders, and seniors. So that would be a vehicle parade in that, um, theme, I guess, is the idea. Um, so one is, uh, making sure this is okay here. Um, in addition, I don't know, we haven't gotten that far in the planning of it. Um, this is just an idea. We don't know where the lineup would be, and I guess the only ask that we would have is to utilize this area to get it started. Um, the Rouse's Point Fire Department would be heading it up and would actually, um, be the, um, grand marshal in total of the parade, so they will be starting it. So, I don't know, we haven't gotten that far.
I don't want to volunteer them for anything, but I do know that they know how to organize one of these things.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, if you get the, if you get the units lined up.
Yeah.
Um, the fire department knows how to put them in a row and get them going around in a parade room.
And they have, um, offered to do that, which is fantastic.
Okay.
Um, the other idea is to, um, in lieu of that parade, they would be judging. We would have a house decorating contest, um, basically thanking those categories, essential workers, um, emergency responders, and seniors, and, um.
What about school teachers?
And, well, they would be essential. They would definitely be essential workers. You know, we're talking Stewarts and, and Hudson, and, you know, every, everybody who stayed open so that we could keep going, basically, would be thanked. Um, we're trying to see if we can get to their corporates and have a car for them and decorating, you know, in the parade and so on, so that would be nice. But sort of to get the community involved is basically, um, first, second, and third prizes. The, we haven't figured out the categories yet, or if there will be categories of, you know, most lights or best theme or, you know.
What, what do you think about asking some of the essential businesses that have stayed open, the hardware store?
Yeah.
And, um, the restaurants, you know, Sandy's and, and, uh, Lakeside.
Just saying, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, and Stewarts, yeah, because they all have company cars for the most part, or they can make a float and decorate something.
Yeah, that's what we're hoping.
I mean, they've really gotten us through this thing.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, if those people didn't come to work, uh, you know.
Yeah, absolutely, and that's, that's the hope for it.
Be nice to have Price Chopper in, too. They really stepped up to the big time during this.
Yeah, that's why you started it early, because all of that requires a corporate blessing.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we're hoping that, that comes through, and a couple of other ideas and, and following the regs and the guidelines and so on.
Everybody stays home, just like they have like a birthday or something.
Correct.
And people go by their house and.
Absolutely, and I believe.
Take the orange or whatever and stuff.
Yeah, the idea is to do the exact same thing where you're going by the houses so people don't have to congregate anywhere. To, you know, like one route, everybody would go there, so it's not like that.
Right.
It'd be going down. I think every, every street and by every house except for dead ends and places where they can't turn around.
Can't turn around, right.
Um, and we sort of suggested, you know, going out of town or even up by, I don't know if I can still get ahold of the people that own up by Wyatt. You know, people that maybe live on dead ends could park up there, and they could get out that way, so those are ideas. So, um, so that's the biggest part of the involvement, I think, with the village. Um, we also, uh, would like to do a virtual bike decorating contest because that's one of the things that the kiddos were gonna do, was do a bike contest, and they would judge, and they would have been in the parade, but they can't do that, so we would have them upload, um, the pictures, and they would vote on it. But again, prizes, you know, for that, to get the kids involved. And then the final idea that was actually suggested by, um, Jason Bory was to do sort of a, a thank you video, you know, and have sort of a, uploaded the videos of thinking whomever has helped you the most during this time, or what has helped you or means something to you, and judge on that. So the reason why I bring those up is I know, um, you know, festivals and funding and all of that stuff is awfully hard right now. Um, but seeing if there was still funding available for said prizes that we're talking about and those contests that we're doing.
So what are you estimating the cost will be? And you, have you expended any money so far on this? You must have had some expenses today.
Yes, there are some expenses, yes. But minimal. It's like a raffles, and we had some events that we did, and it was, you know, not too much, but ultimately it would be for prizes at this point.
Okay, what are you talking about, like, a couple hundred dollars or five hundred dollars?
I would think five hundred because there's three contests, and I'm hoping to be able to break them up in that manner and having three different categories. Um, that would be helpful.
Okay, um, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Um, I will make a motion to, um, cancel the, the traditional Fourth of July celebration in Rouse's Point for the first time in the history of the village. But also, um, as part of that, as part of this motion, authorize the, um, the Fourth of July Committee to expend up to five hundred dollars on alternative celebratory, um, COVID-compliant, uh, activities for this summer. Uh, this will be prize, uh, prizes awarded to different things and non-contact type, uh, activities.
I'd like to see that go to six hundred.
How are you going to, um?
We like paying for the fireworks.
Well, it's, it's totally different. You, the municipality's not allowed to give out a prize.
Oh.
I don't even need to borrow a dime, but I need, you know, the budget officer should know that, so.
Well, I was thinking that we were giving it, we're funding the Fourth of July Committee, and then they buy things for their committee or for their celebration that's been voted on by the board and approved. And they're just redirecting it in a different way because we'd be paying for, uh, say, hiring bands or marching units or whatever, whatever else we do during the Fourth of July, we have expenses.
Usually the fund, the fund goes towards the fireworks. And you get a bill, you get a bill to back up the expenditure.
So legally, we can't do that.
I don't want, I don't want you to make, make me the bad guy here.
No, no, I'm trying to think of other ways to, to, um, to put it towards something because you could buy prizes, but that still wouldn't categorize that. Um, you know, gift certificates, that wouldn't do it.
Well, what do you say if you went to the businesses and see if you could drown some money from them?
Yeah, well, a, a couple have said that they've had some, uh, you know, gift certificates and stuff, but we're hoping to, I don't know, make it a little bit more competitive.
Yeah.
Such a loss, I don't know, but.
Now, the money for your raffles and stuff, could, could that go in towards that?
Yes, yeah, we could definitely use that.
But I would make the donation towards that.
I could check with the state controllers office if you want me to, I mean, just to make sure, but.
I would say it wouldn't hurt to check because this is a unique situation.
We're pissed off, thank you. I appreciate it. We've been trying.
I know they've wasted some money in the state level, so.
Yeah, right.
Billions. Okay, I have a motion on the floor. I need a second.
A second now.
Okay, is there any more discussion on it?
Now, what was the motion? No?
Cancel the Fourth of July, and we're authorizing, um, alternative, um.
Okay.
If possible.
You know, whatever, whatever they can come up with.
I have the stuff right here actually in front of me, but I mean, yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that's what we're gonna do there, then, I guess. Uh, next thing is we have, um, resignation of our line helper, trainee. So, um, what we need to do is advertise, um, for a line helper, and I would suggest we also advertise for a lineman. And then whatever we get, pick, you know, hire one of the other. We're not gonna hire two different people, but we, we, you know, we have one position open. We'd rather have a lineman, but, uh, we'll also advertise for a line helper. So.
Can the, uh, can the board see his resignation? Are we allowed to see that? Why he resigned?
He didn't even tell us. It was like, she's got a copy, but I think I got, right here, right here.
Oh, you have a copy of it.
You have a copy. He didn't do it. He just called in and said, I quit yesterday. You know, he got a job someplace else for forty dollars an hour, I guess.
And it's an email, so you have to read it from the bottom. On the second page.
He didn't give any reasons or anything. He just, uh, what he did was he kind of word of mouth said he quit, and so, uh, um.
On the twenty-eighth, Donna emailed.
Donna asked him to put it in writing in the email, and he said, okay, there, it's in writing. That's what you got, so. I guess line worker and line helper, those are the two positions we have, and the, the, uh, job descriptions are there. I would suggest that we advertise it in, uh, News and Views. We can put it in papers, I guess, and on our website.
Susan, you familiar with, uh, News and Views?
No, but I guess I'm going to get familiar with News and Views.
I got a.
Oh, they came in the mail today. I will be able to fill back to the.
Yeah, I got one today. Right here.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, what's, does the board have a comment on this? Any comments on this, uh, filling this position at this time?
As soon as possible.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we advertise for the two positions.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Um, bid announced, uh, bid results for the, uh, Rec Center Parks Grant, the general contractor, they came in a little bit high. Um, has the board had a chance to review that?
How did the, uh, total price compare? Didn't we get one before?
No.
Oh, okay, I don't think we had any.
What I would say is that these are, you know, this is not anywhere near what we're looking at, but I would, I would ask that we, uh, table it for two weeks. And see if the, uh, see if, uh, Steve can pull anything out of it that's useful for us. Now, one, one says three hundred and sixty thousand, and then at the bottom where they wrote it in, it was three hundred and ninety, ninety thousand. Well, no, it's three hundred and sixty, then a contingency of thirty brings it up to three ninety. Oh, okay. And none of that stuff matters because it's out of the question. We only have, there's, I think, a hundred and seven thousand dollars left in the grant that hasn't been spent yet. And there's also seventy-eight thousand that the village is gonna be contributing mostly through, uh, labor and equipment usage. I don't know how much of that we've fulfilled, but we're gonna use every bit of that up, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so I guess I would, does the board have any comment on this?
I think we ought to go to Mr. Peters, uh, and take a look, see if he can pick something out of it.
Oh, yeah, okay, so we'll table it for two weeks?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion. We table it for two weeks.
Second now.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Now, update on the shuffleboard courts. The shuffleboard courts, um, as you know, last year, we had the, um, Lisa Turd came up with the money for this, some grant, and we approved it. We, we, we picked a location over in the Rouse Park, and everything is all set to go, but it was so late in the year, they couldn't pour the concrete. It was like November or December or something. So, I got contacted her, and I said, we're ready to go, and she said, I don't know if the grant money's still there anymore. There was like a question. I thought it was already anchored down. So anyway, I got ahold of her, emailed her, and she checked into where she gets the grant from, and they said it's okay. So what we have to do is, we have to contact, DSO's the one that they talked with, the grant people, and they will install the court. The village has to remove, has to dig it out eight by fifty-two, or ten feet by fifty-two feet, and put some crushed stone on the bottom, and then DSO's comes up, puts the forms and everything, pours the concrete, and I don't know who paints it on there, the lettering on it, but I don't think we have anything to do with it, other than, and then what'll happen is, we'll take the bill and send it in for reimbursement from this grant place. And that includes, the grant also includes all the equipment and, and the different stuff that's gonna be, as you recall from last year, it's gonna be, um, located at like the Lakeside Coffee Shop, the library, and I think there was one other place that had volunteered it, so people can go and sign out the equipment for it. And I suggested that we pour two concrete slabs, uh, strategically located near this so that we can eventually put two park benches on it. You know, one at each end, but, you know, where they, probably along the hedge or something. We'll figure that out when we site this thing out, so that's where we are as an update on this. Uh, that's all I have for now. Um, trustee Arnold?
About, uh, item number five.
Well, that's what we just covered with this, with, with Karen did with his presentation.
Well, we didn't touch on most of the.
We didn't touch, touch based on the other two things, at least.
Oh.
Most of the coast, summer concert series.
Okay, okay.
And the most wide yard sale.
Okay, the most for the coast, uh, I believe we have to cancel that. And the summer concert series has been canceled. They already notified us that they canceled it.
Right.
Right, yeah. And we've already talked about the village wide yard sale, so.
So we're canceling that.
Yeah, so I guess, I guess the motion there would be to cancel these activities for the summer.
I'll make a motion that we cancel these activities reluctantly, but.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, trustee Arnold?
All right, uh, I got a couple things here. Oh, the trees, there's a tree over by Connie Antil's, right next to the transformer, and it's half-dead, and she's had about probably three or four limbs fall in her driveway. So it's, it's on village property. So I just wondered if we could cut that down. It's not a very big tree.
I'll go take a look at it tomorrow and talk to Jason.
Okay.
You'd like to crew.
It's right next to the transformer, right by her driveway, and you can see it, it's half-dead. Like the one that was in the library, half-dead and stuff. Then the other one is on Montgomery Street, are you, Montgomery Street? That big, uh, soft maple, it's raising the sidewalk, the sidewalk raised up probably about two and a half, three inches, all right? And what they did, they, they chopped half it off with a chainsaw or whatever because it's raised up probably about four inches, and then.
Was that next to Eldred's Pharmacy up there?
Yes.
Okay.
That one right there.
Okay.
Yeah. So, and there was another one, I forgot where.
Well, I wouldn't want to cut it down if it's still healthy. I mean, if we, you have to move the sidewalk around it or something, maybe.
Well, you can't move the sidewalk because there's a, a step right there next to it. So, and the guys on the street department almost took the, uh, the, the porch down because they hit that in the wintertime, and it shot off the, the sidewalk pile, and they almost ran into that porch. So. Anyhow, so you can take a look at that.
Yeah.
Like Pine Street, you said?
Montgomery Street.
Montgomery.
Yeah, it was one on Pine.
Lake and Pine.
Yeah, there was one on Pine, the same thing, that's raising the sidewalk up by, I think it's by Link Clark's there. It's got a pretty good groove in the, in the cement there and stuff. So. And I was wondering if Susan or Mr. Merrick called PRS and asked if they could move the fence back to the cement? And there's a few people, couple people on Maple Street that would keep the grass up and the flowers that's out there right now and stuff.
Okay. They gotta work on that fence anyway because I noticed down on Academy Street, on the part that's falling over, the temporary fence.
Part of it is falling, it has fallen.
Yeah, they gotta fix that anyway.
Yeah, so anyhow, if they could do that and move it back, these people on Maple Street said they, they would take care of the lawn and, and spruce up the flowers and stuff like that, and make it look a lot better.
Yeah, okay, I will do that.
I thought they told us last year they were gonna move that back.
Well, we'll just put a little bug in there right now.
You mentioned the sidewalk flower.
Yeah, the sidewalk flower, and they said, oh, yeah, we're gonna move that back.
Okay, and, uh, what about the flower baskets for the bowls on the main street?
Yes.
I spoke with them today. They'll be delivered on June eighth. It's been cold. They're, they're too small to come out.
Oh, yeah, there was a delay. We got it about a month ago. They told us they were delayed at the nursery because of the, they hadn't grown up big enough yet to sell them to us.
Yeah, they'll be delivered next Monday.
Okay.
And, uh, uh, I had John Menard, I went to see him today, and he said that he had to talk to the guy about, uh, some signs for the village, like that sign that social distances. And then there was one with, uh, there were three different signs anyhow. And they're sixteen dollars and fifty cents each to have them made. And I think we should have some made for the, like, for the library and for the village office.
Well, this thing looks like it's gonna be over within a few weeks. I mean, we're in phase two now. We're gonna go to phase three in two or three weeks.
Well, this, this, while some say that you still gotta wear a mask and stuff like that.
Hit phase four, it's a wide open, I think. I'm not sure, but. When are they gonna?
I don't know. I think this is gonna go on until next year. I mean, uh, to my opinion.
Could we get a vaccination?
Yeah, or something, yeah. These masks ain't gonna go away next month, that's for sure. So. We don't have to buy, uh, a, a couple dozen or something like that, but, uh, I think we ought to have at least, uh, probably, probably six of each, probably.
How many other two different ones?
Three different ones. Say, Arson? Is there three different ones? Hand washing, well, distance and mask for one thing.
Can't they put them on the same sign?
I think there's two.
There's three of them, yes. I know there's three. One for hand washing.
Oh.
Distance and.
Mask.
Mask.
I, I gave the civic center some paper ones for, um, for the bathrooms. I know Ethan said something to me today that he wanted, that he said that he wanted, he wanted him to put some paper mat signs out in the playground or something.
Yeah, laminate them and put them on the playground signs out there.
How long do you think they're gonna last?
Well, we'll see, I mean, you know, we don't have to have them there, but it's a good idea to have them there.
Well, what I'm saying, I mean.
You know, there's two, there's signs already out there that say about the playground rules that came with the new playground. And if he tapes it on there and sees how long it lasts, I mean, there's, people have been pretty, pretty, you know, pretty nice around here with this, you know, the playground. Nobody's been vandalizing it or anything, a lot of people back.
You're thinking of, I'm saying, Tom, it's a safety issue. You know, and if, if we can't spend a couple hundred dollars for something, for some safety stuff, I mean, you know, I mean, I think it's pretty ridiculous, I mean. I don't know, whatever.
No, make a motion, that would be.
Okay, yeah, well, what, see, how many you want, how much you wanna spend on it?
Well, we should get at least six of each.
Okay, so that's eighteen.
Yeah.
And how much are they?
Sixteen fifty apiece. So it'll be about two hundred and, uh, two hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Two hundred and eighty-eight plus, uh, plus.
Three hundred bucks.
About three hundred bucks.
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead and make a motion.
I make a motion, we buy these signs and have John Benard order them for, say, three hundred dollars.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
All right, so I got the flowers, I got the signs and stuff, but they'll stay back here.
It was about the power trees that were, you heard about that, right?
Yes, what are we doing about that?
Well, here's the thing, we got a fiasco going on here with NIPA. We had this tree program that we advertised to the village, you buy one tree and you get two for one. And so the deadline was today to come in, today they called and they said, you're only gonna get one tree, you're not gonna get two. So in other words, they essentially advertised it one way and doubled the price. So I don't think the village should buy any. And I think we should tell those five people that ordered them what the deal is and I don't think they'll want them either. And then if they back down on this and change their mind, then we can go and put an order in again, but I don't like.
Well, we can't put an order in because the deadline was doomed first.
No, I mean, yeah, but there was a whole lot of things that changed, like they moved the deadline and then they doubled the price on them. And, and I don't see how you can double the price after you've already advertised something.
Yeah.
You know, but I don't think we should have anything to do with them until they figure out what they're doing.
Okay, yeah, we are at ten.
So we would've got like twenty, right?
Right.
So I mean, and, you know, that's.
And the thing of it was, wasn't it something, Susan, that the residents couldn't buy them?
Yeah, actually, um, I, I called and spoke with the people at the nursery, they said the funding had run out for it. I called the NIPA people who were sponsoring it, the ones who sent out the email saying, no, it's extended to June first. And he told me that it says right on the, the piece of paper that goes out, and it does, that residential, that residences are not allowed to apply for these trees.
Really?
I didn't see that on any of the paperwork that we got.
I didn't see that either, and I give, I give one to my sister-in-law and she wanted two of them.
It's not on the order list, it's on the main piece of paper that came, that didn't get copied and sent out. So the order list and the trees got copied and sent to everybody. But the sheet of paper that came to the village does say that this is, this program is not for residential use.
Okay, well, that makes it simpler to cancel out the five people and refund their money, I guess. I mean, that's gonna be a pain for the office to do, but it's only five people and we'll just cancel it for the village then.
Okay.
Okay, I'll do that tomorrow.
Yes, uh, now on Academy Street, are we doing Academy Street this year?
Well, I would say if we can get it done, we will. But we don't know, with the other stuff that. What?
I said, you got it on his list.
I know it's on his list and if they can get it done, we'll get it done, but if they can't.
But the thing of it is, the guy just got the, or Carl Weiss, Adam talked to him today. And he said he might be here in mid-July, or early July or mid-July. So if he comes in again, Adam said you won't have enough time to do most signs.
He won't have enough time to do it, putting two things down each side like that, that's why we.
So why don't we take him out of the sidewalk?
Because the sidewalks are more important than curbs right now, that street is totally passable, it's got a complete, it's been completely repaved with the base coat. There's no manhole sticking up, it's totally passable, we gotta get this other stuff done first. I wouldn't, to me, first off, we don't even know if we're gonna get the CHIPS money for these streets. We don't know what the, what the state's gonna let go on this.
Well, we got the money in our budget.
No, well, if we get reimbursed for it. We're anticipating.
Well, is our money in our budget?
We're anticipating.
Fifty-six thousand dollars? Where? Isn't fifty-six thousand dollars in our budget to do Academy Street?
Yeah, but that's offset by CHIPS money. You, you got anticipated revenues, Ben.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
And we don't know if we're gonna get those revenues because we don't, the state's gonna come through with any of this stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's what I'm saying is, if we have to, Academy Street's a good candidate to just leave till next year. We got a lot of other paving to do that we can do if they come. You know, we got a lot of streets to do if they have any money and all to pave. But it would take, I mean, last year, it took almost the whole summer to do Pine Street and what, what they did on Academy Street.
Yeah, but you gotta remember, Tom, that they worked a month and a half right in front of Wyatt, trying to find that water pipe.
Yeah. He told me it was two weeks, but anyways, no, I, I would say that, that street wouldn't hurt if it held over till next year because it's in good shape. It's not like it's, you know, half done and all torn up and everything. And I think we're going real good, we're making really good progress on this other stuff. And we got stuff that they have to do, like this parking lot back here, that's gotta be done as part of that grant thing. And we've gotta do the, uh, the, that, excavate the thing for the shuffleboard grant and there's, we got a lot of stuff for them to do and I'd say if we have to cut out one thing, that'd be the one thing to postpone for a year.
Well. I don't know, to me, if it was in the budget, we should've done it, I don't care. But anyhow, also, I got one other thing. On, uh. For Susan and stuff like that, I think she should be in charge of the men.
No.
Yeah.
Well, you can have your opinion, but it's not gonna be that way.
Well, it should be that way. I mean, every other administrator here and stuff we had here.
None of them were, the only one that was, was Jan, was, uh.
Gene.
Gene LaBombarde. Gene LaBombarde, and we know what happened there. You remember what that was like, I don't wanna talk about it on, on the camera here, but.
Art Balker, he was in charge of the men. Peters was in charge of the men.
No, he wasn't, Peters wasn't in charge of anybody and neither was, neither was, uh, Donna.
Well, but Hartnall was. I mean, right now, they, right now, they go into her and ask her a question and stuff, half the time you ain't around.
I'm in this village every day, every day. I spend three hours a day on village work at minimum.
But the trouble is, Tom, you're going to the guys every day and stuff. You're hounding them, you're hounding them.
I'm not hounding them.
Well.
I notice you're around there every day.
No, I went seeing Johnny Benard to ask him about this thing right here tonight, if he ordered them. Or if he got a price on them, that's all I looked for, to see Johnny Benard and stuff.
I think we, I think.
And you're micromanaging, the guys, again.
Nobody's micromanaging anything.
Don't tell me you're not.
That's a lie, that's a lie and I'm not gonna stand for it.
I don't care.
You can make these comments and criticisms that you've been making and you don't know what you're talking about on this stuff.
Don't tell me I don't know what I'm talking about. Oh, yeah, well, I'll tell you what, you're micromanaging, that's what you're doing. And what's gonna happen, the guys, you keep hounding them and hounding them, and you know what's gonna happen when, when these days? They're gonna make them believe that they're working, but they're not.
Well, they're good at that, yeah. Yeah, they can do that, I can see that happening.
Yeah, well, that's what's gonna happen.
I went up there for fifteen minutes today to see if they were having any problems at all.
You can say what you want.
Well, that's what I was up there for, you get different stories from different people that don't wanna do what you want.
Whatever. I'm just telling you, I think Susan should be in charge, you go in there every day to talk to her and stuff like that or whatever and stuff? And I think everybody goes and talks to her and stuff.
I think we've got it done pretty good, we've got, we've got water and sewer under one guy. He reports to me and I talk to him about it every two weeks. We got direct reports, one guy, three guys working for him, he reports to me, whenever he's got a problem, he calls me up. I got a tree limb or something needs to be cut, I tell him about it, bring him up to a day on it. Electric's doing their own thing, uh, they call me if they need something.
I talked to the Bass Mayor and stuff like that and he never, never went down to the blue building one day. Not one day, he stayed in his office.
He was criticized a lot for that too by you. When, when we were having problems with things going on around here and we had him in charge of the, the water and the sewer and all that stuff that he didn't wanna give to the public works superintendent, remember that, before he gave it to him? And we'd get, we'd have a complaint about something at the rec center and we'd tell him and he'd go and they'd tell him what, the answer to it, whatever they wanted to say and he'd come back and tell us.
Like he said, if he had problems, the guys would go through the office and see him and stuff. Because he was there for two hours every day.
Yeah.
Anyhow. Just to let you know. That's all I have, Mr. Merrick.
All right, trustee Darke.
I'd like to request an executive session to speak about a particular employee.
Okay, uh.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, trustee Menard, oh, excuse me, you have any, any more?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
Just one thing, trustee Menard.
Um, I just want to recognize the rec center crew, the lawns are looking good around the village and they're doing a good job. And that's all I have for seeing.
All right, thank you. Trustee Gadway is absent tonight, um, other reports? John, do you have anything?
No, just doing the regular, starting to do near our regular maintenance program, getting after the people that are being delinquent on their lawns and the same thing we do every year.
Yeah.
It's that time of year.
Okay, uh, anything from the public? No? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to recess for executive session.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're in recess.